Mr. City Clerk, may you please conduct roll call?
Mayor Protem Melendez.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to reconvene from closed session today at 7:02 PM. Mr. City Attorney, can you please provide a report on our closed session items?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The record should reflect that the City Council, with all five members being present, recessed into closed session to discuss items one, two, and three, and the following is my report. On each of those items, actually, the City Council received a briefing on the labor negotiator matter, the real property negotiator matter, and the anticipated litigation item. There was no final action taken. Direction was provided to city staff in the city attorney's office, but there was no action that is required to be reported at this time, and that concludes my report from closed session. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you very much. Today for our invocation, we have our city clerk, and for our pledge of allegiance, we have Councilmember Torres. If we can go ahead and begin with our invocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community. Keep in mind always the enduring values of life, exerting our efforts in those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
Please face the flag and repeat after me. Put your right hand over your heart. Of the United States.
Okay, moving forward with corrections to the agenda, Mr. City Manager.
Mayor, councilmembers, yes, we're going to be pulling two items for presentation, which is the fiscal year 2024-25 proposed budget fiscal year, and then fiscal year 2024-2025 CIP budget, and then item number seven is being pulled for our presentation as well.
Thank you very much. Moving forward with our presentations for item number four, which is National Bike Month. Unfortunately, the resident that I did want to honor today was not able to attend, but just to kick off or include National Bike Month this month. As many of you know, May is not just a month of blooming flowers. Last council meeting, we had many presentations in celebration of all that encompasses this month, but it's also a celebration of pedal power joy through National Bike Month. Amid the festivities that we've seen throughout the month, it's really heartening to note that our community efforts are making a tangible difference. And I did want to just, although he is not here, recognize Mr. Vincent LaRoca, who is a resident of Montebello, but he is also the Chair of the Traffic and Safety Commission. Mr. De La Roca has been a very passionate advocate in terms of safer streets in our city. He was a really great advocate in terms of encouraging and pushing council to get bike racks at our facilities throughout the city, which is something we didn't have in the past, and also was very encouraging in terms of having council take action on a comprehensive bike master plan, which is something that we recently adopted. He actually also has a bicycle, community bicycle club here in the city called Sustainabello, and they do have bike, community bike rides every third Sunday of the month, and it is very family-friendly and pet-friendly as well. And so, just do want to recognize him in terms of all the efforts he's put to create a safer, safer community, and also really promoting a healthier lifestyle within the city. That concludes our ceremonial items and presentations. Now, moving forward, we do have our public comments on non-agenda items. Mr. City Clerk, if you may please facilitate that. Okay, actually, oh. Okay, actually, we do have a presentation that is being added, which is the fiscal year 2024-2025 proposed budget and the fiscal year 2024-2025 CIP budget. So, we can please have that. Thank you very much.
Mayor, if I may, just for clarification purposes, since it wasn't on the agenda, this is only a presentation. No action is going to be taken. I would suggest that there be limited conversation on the topic, because it will be coming back at a future council meeting for more in-depth dialogue and action.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you. So, if we can pull that presentation up. So, this is continuation, some answering some questions from two weeks ago, when there was the first budget overview presentation. The council had some specific questions, so I wanted to be able to return with that and be able to provide those answers, as well as provide an update on where we are with the overall expenditures and revenues. And then my colleague, Mr. Old Dan, is going to provide an overview of the CIP budget as well for everybody's edification. And there we go. Excellent. And there we go. Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. So again, a quick overview, general fund revenue expenditures, updates from two weeks ago, and then follow-up on a couple of questions from City Council, supplemental requests, and some transit and hotel information. So updated, where we're at today, $602,700 surplus in the general fund. It was over $700,000 a couple of weeks ago. Since then, there's been some adjustments in terms of additional supplementals added, some more conversation with departments in terms of expenditures. So it's reduced the surplus somewhat, but again, still a nice surplus for $602,000 at this point. And then last week, there was the indication that there'd be a follow-on slide with some costing information for the park safety program. I know this is a City Council priority. Our police chief presented his overview of this program several months ago. So what's included in the 2425 budget is funding for two full-time police community service officers. Those would be the ones providing the boots on the ground at our city parks. The radios for them and some other equipment, that's kind of shorthand, the other equipment that basically would allow them to respond. And then we're still, City Manager and I and the police chief are still discussing some other funding, non-general fund funding sources for vehicles and some other things. I know the police department has access to grants, and so there might be some ability to provide vehicles and other equipment outside the general fund. But for now, the program will be moving forward with the funding for the two police community service officers. And then, as you see, fully built out, ideally, there'd be a lieutenant, sergeant, and two corporals. Again, those are not in the budget, but as we move forward and the program gets more fully formed, you know, we can return to council either during fiscal 2024-25, or at a later point to provide additional staffing and funding towards the program. And then supplemental requests, there's a request to provide additional, more detailed information on the staffing requests for several departments. I will say, it's kind of dense, so, you know, I apologize for those watching, that the information is dense, but I do intend to follow up with a memo that would be distributed through the City Manager and Council with the same information, so you could probably spend a little more time perusing it as necessary. So in community development, what was being asked for for next year's budget, a deputy director, senior management analyst, and a management analyst. Again, the deputy director focused on economic development efforts. The higher-level position would provide greater oversight of those efforts. You know, and again, not just economic development, some open space development, public safety, and some other, you know, essential tasks. The senior management analysts would support the building and safety division, newly reintroduced to the Community Development Department from Public Works. Looking after the municipal code, necessary updates to the building code, things like that. And then the management analysts would be responsible for supporting the code enforcement division. And I know the Community Development Director has been talking with City Manager about a task force to kind of help with some difficult trouble spots in the city. So this management analyst would support that function. And then for Public Works, it's the administrative manager, a senior management analyst, an administrative assistant. The admin manager would provide a much higher level administrative support to the administrative department in terms of, or division, excuse me, in terms of budget, CIP, purchasing, contracts management, those areas right now that are kind of spread amongst various employees. This would be centralized into one manager level, who would have oversight of other employees supporting that. The senior management analyst would be an upgrade, so there'd be a senior manager analyst helping out with park maintenance and facilities maintenance divisions. And the administrative assistant would help directly the streets and parks division with work orders, purchase orders, things like that. There's a lot of administrative work that the current superintendent necessarily can't necessarily get to, and so this administrative assistant, much more appropriate to help out with those duties. In Parks and Recreation, Golf Course Facilities Manager, Public Affairs Manager, Administrative Assistant. Golf Course Facilities Manager with the brand-new Reimagine Golf Course and Trune Management. This would provide day-to-day liaison between the city and Trune and other golf course contractors. Basically, we have a nice diamond out there, we want to keep it shiny. This position would help with that. Having somebody at the golf course familiar with the needs and the, you know, whatever issues might arise, basically keeping the golf course functioning and at the level we expect it to, and the community expects it to. And the Public Affairs Manager, Public Affairs being moved into Parks and Recreation this past year. This would provide some additional oversight and support at the manager level for Public Affairs, all of our social media efforts. You know, looking at some AI technology, you know, obviously the PIO functions, items like that. And the administrative assistant, I know the director is looking for more consistency at the front desk there at headquarters. Right now, it's staffed by part-time employees, and it's kind of difficult with part-time employees when it comes to having a regular schedule, some consistency. This would really improve customer service at the front desk, answering phones, class reservations, things like that. And then police, again, as mentioned earlier, the two police community service officers dedicated to the Park Safety Bureau. Transit is looking for adding two fleet maintenance supervisors. They have some coverage issues in terms of, you know, it's a seven-day, 22-hour-a-day operation, so this would provide some additional coverage of those quote-unquote "off-hours" for the maintenance supervisor level. And then Fire, seeking some kind of day-to-day task, more oriented help in their payroll and invoicing and purchasing areas. So again, I know this is a lot of, there's a lot of good information here, I don't want it necessarily to be lost, so there will be a follow-on memo that I'll work with the City Manager, provide to council, so you can read this a little more in-depth and at your leisure. And then as a reminder, in addition to staff, what's included is some M&amp;O, $251,000 in additional supplemental requests for supplies and services in the general fund, another $150,000 in the transit fund. So for police, some software for dispatch to help them with GIS and some backup software for their operations, and then a K-9 heat warning system for our K-9 units. Parks and Recreation, as we've been offering more and more regular events, they've seen a need for audiovisual equipment. There's some YEP funding in there, which is kind of a one-time blip. We don't have as much CDBG funding available next year for YEP, but that's a very important program, so funding it for one year out of the general fund. And then funding for an annual parade in the fall. The Fire supplemental is the CERT supplies for that program. Public Works, they've had some increased vehicle maintenance, they want to be able to replace some street signs throughout the community, some other street maintenance-related equipment for their uses. Under Information Technology, replacement hardware, some laptops to be able to loan out to departments as they need them for productivity reasons. And then in Transit, as they're looking to implement the hydrogen fuel cell project, some management services there and a fueling software program. So that's all on the maintenance operations side. And then, as requested, returning with some explanation on the variances in the transit budget year-over-year. So when you look at last year's adopted budget to next year's proposed budget, you'll see in the admin division, there was a $3.246 million increase year-over-year. So there's an increase in salary and benefits, there's some vacancies that have been filled in the last year that we need to obviously fund. And also looking at, looking at what the budget is for this year, was under-budget for this year. The trend for this year is actually 2.4 million higher than the budget. That was kind of a miss in putting the budget together this year. There's also, with the solar project underway, there's a portion that's funded by Transit. The financing expenses are showing up now for the first time, as that project is nearing completion, is showing up. So that's a new expense that wasn't there last year, again, adding to the year-over-year increase. And then in Operations, you'll see a decrease of $2.3 million. So operations salary and benefit budgets were over-budgeted last year. Again, their budgets are trending much lower, so looking at the 14.8 million in that division versus 17.2, that's much more accurate, realistic number. Similar in the corporate shops, the budget for salaries and benefits this year was higher than it needed to be, but also there was an $800,000 supplemental item in the 2324 budget that's not in next year. So it looks like a giant drop-off, but that's because we had funding in the 2324 budget to wrap the buses, all our new buses, to wrap them in the new logos, and also there was a purchase of a couple of heavy-duty pieces of equipment that were included in this year's budget. So it looks like a larger drop than it really is when you include those kind of one-time purchases. So overall, the, you know, with all the puts and takes, the overall change from year to year is only $600,000. And then we had a couple of questions on the Hilton Garden Inn and the Home2 Suites. So currently, the debt service for Hilton Garden Inn will end in 2034, so it'll end in 10 years. And that would reduce expenditures by about $1 million annually. So right now, debt service is about $1 million. So once that's completely paid off, you'll see expenditures drop by $1 million, which, assuming by then, the hotel is still doing very well, revenue will have increased. So you'll see a gain in the surpluses year-over-year, once that's extinguished. Home2 Suites being a much newer hotel, the debt service doesn't end until 2046, but that would reduce expenditures by 3.6 million annually. So again, same thing. You see those annual expenses, they would reduce by 3.6 million. Assuming revenue is going up, we'd have a bigger gap. So, you know, there's that light at the end of the tunnel in terms of when debt service ends, and you have, that frees up expenses. So at this point, you know, I continue to work with the departments and with the City Manager on kind of refining our revenue expenditure projections, putting any last-minute requests that are deemed important enough into the budget. You'll get a Public Works CIP budget overview here in one second. And then when we return to the first meeting in June, the budget will be presented for review and adoption at that point. And then just on your radar, by mid-next week, proposed budget binders will be distributed. So you'll get hard copies of the budget detail. So you'll have that prior to the meeting in June, with hopefully enough time to review, and if there are questions between now and then, work through the City Manager. So, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, and we have our CIP presentation as well.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council members and honest members. This is our projected 2425 CIP projects. So what are capital improvement program? Basically, the plan outlines the funding and timing for capital improvement projects. The program guides an adopted long-range plan, schools, and policies for the next year, and then technically within the next five years as well. And this is a dynamic process that anticipates projects being added or modified as the need arises from both City Council stakeholders and the community at large. So basically, projects and compliance are looking to comply with ADA regulations, roadway safety enhancements, upgrades at city facilities, like parks, fire stations, and so forth. We're looking, obviously, to increase and improve our open spaces for recreational purposes. We're looking for safety enhancements and traffic circulation improvements, and just the overall improvement of our wet utilities, like our sewer and storm drain and water quality as well with regards to our MS4. So here's our first project. It's a project that's been in the books for a while. It's our HCP Cycle 7 project. We have several funding sources from Metro Prop C to state and federal HCP funding. The project looking at a total of $1,809, that's what we have budgeted. We're looking to seek construction bids sometime in the near future. We're looking at September, coming back to City Council for that request. We're looking to commence construction in April of 2025, and then complete construction sometime in May 2026. Basically, the reason is that these are traffic signal enhancements, and the fabrication of poles takes roughly four to six months. Our next project is our Bluff Road Property Determination Service Scope, which is an item that was awarded by the City Council back in May of 2024. And the idea was that we had brought this so that we could determine the actual location and where we were gonna put in the chailing fence. We're looking to get this out as soon as possible, with the idea that we're going to be looking at November of 2025 to finish this project. Our next project is Garfield Avenue on Via Campo, which is a burst turnout project as well. Currently, it's in the environmental phase, which we're technically still reviewing from a step perspective. This is fully funded through Prop A funds. And the design, we're looking to start sometime in September of 2024. We're looking at a completion date of March of 2025, and then looking for City Council approval in April of 2025 to go out to bid. Looking to commence construction sometime in July of 2025, and complete the project in February of 2026. Another project that we have in books is the Bluff Roads Slope Stabilization Project. There is segments of the roadway that are eroding, eroding into the LA County Flood Control District's water retention basin. This is actually funded through gas tax, $300,000. We're looking to come before the City Council to award a letter of engagement for the design August of 2024. Commence design sooner after and complete design in March of 2025. Our traffic signal maintenance project, this project is actually to replace traffic signal controller cabinets at existing locations in some streetlights. The idea is that we are enhancing various intersections throughout the city. Looking again to come back sometime in the near future to City Council with a letter of engagement, and ultimately construct and install the controllers by October of 2025. Again, long lead items for traffic signal controllers. This one is our SB1-funded project from last year, which is our Olympic Boulevard Complete Streets Feasibility Study. So this is in part is we're looking at the whole corridor in Olympic, as to what kind of enhancements we could do with regards to complete streets, integration of bike safety enhancements, sidewalk improvements, payment improvements, and so forth. We're looking to bring this to the City Council sometime in the next month, and then commence this project in July of 2024. this project in July of 2024 and looking to complete this in February of 2025. And this project, this feasibility study allows us to go after grants in the near Our annual street grant and overlay CP913 is a combination of Measure M funds and Metro funds up to $100,000. And this is various roadways that we will be presenting to the city council for approval sometime in September of this year. And we're looking for, to commence construction in November 2024 and complete the project by June of 2025. This is another projection from street reconstruction, but in this case, the pavement, the roadways are actually in a more deteriorated state. So we're looking to actually do a little bit more design in this. So that's why this design is going to take us to February of 2025, looking to commence construction sometime next year about this time and hoping to complete the construction by November of 2025. In this case here, it's our annual street solar CO project. We have $293,000 for this purpose. We're looking to seek construction bids in August of 2024 and then commence construction in October and looking to complete construction by January of 2025. This is our rubberized asphalt resurfacing from an environmental measure. We're looking to use crumb rubber to surface, resurface these streets. We're looking for August of 2024 with a construction preliminary bid of February 2025. And then looking to complete this construction by November of 2025. Plaza Drive Design, we are going to be starting this project already technically started in May of 2024. We're looking to complete the design in November of 2024 and then commence construction in January of 2025 and then complete construction by June of 2025. So this project was actually funds that we received from Metro for an exchange in funds. And that's why the segment of Plaza Drive was chosen between Montebello Boulevard and San Gabriel Boulevard. Via San Clemente Entry Roadway, this is another capital project that's in our books, and this is looking to resurface the segment of Via San Clemente west of Garfield Avenue. This is using combination of gas tax funds, Measure M and Measure R funds from Metro. We will probably seek city council approval to bid this project out sometime in September and commence construction in November of 2024 and hopefully complete this by April of This is another grant that the city received from the state regarding Woody Boulevard Sewer Enhancement Project. So this is a segment of the sewer between Montebello Boulevard and the East City Limits. So the current segment, there is a concrete sewer, and we're looking to enhance that section of the sewer. We're looking preliminarily to award design letter of engagement in June of 2024, commence design sooner after, looking to complete that design by February of 2025, looking to start construction in June of 2025 and complete construction by March of 2026. Acuna Park Dog Park. So this is the modification of a segment of Acuna Park to add a dog park for small and large dogs. This is roughly $650,000 estimated at the moment. We're looking to complete design in June of 2024. We're looking to commence construction in August of 2024 and complete by October of 2024. We're also looking at the option of a restroom upgrades, which would probably take us closer to February of 2025. And for this project, we actually have a public outreach meeting tomorrow at Acuna Park at 6:00 PM. So everybody's welcome to voice their opinion on the dog park. Fire Station 56 Remodeling Project CP923, this is funded through CDBG funds. The design started last year. We're looking to finish complete design by August of 2024. We'll probably come to city council seeking construction bids in October of '24, commence construction sooner after in January of 2025, and then complete construction by October of 2025. The Senior Center remodel project is also funded through CDBG. This is another project that started back in 2023. We're looking to complete design in October of 2024, looking for city council approval in December of '24 and commence construction in February '25 and hoping to complete this project by July of '25. Our traffic signal at Woody Boulevard and Sixth Street, this is a brand-new signal. This is partially funded by, since our Chavez Foundation. This received city council approval for the design back in March of 2024. We're looking to complete this design by October 2024, and we're looking to seek construction bids sooner after, actually commence construction sometime in May of '25, just again because there's long lead items on polls. And then sooner after, complete construction by September of 2025. And that concludes our CIP for this upcoming year. It's going to be busy.
Thank you very much. I know seeing that this is just a presentation, we will limit our questions till this comes back for a future council agenda. But I do want to thank you, Director Roldan, as well as Director Solozza for these presentations and updating us on the various projects that are forthcoming to the city. So moving forward, we are at public comments. Mr. City Attorney, may you please read the statement of oral communications?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. At this time, it's the time for public comment and non-agenda items. Anyone who wishes to address the city council on non-agenda items would have to fill out a card and have turned it into the city clerk by this time. And do we have cards for public speakers?
Yes, we do.
How many do we have?
We have a total of 12 speaker cards.
12?
Yes.
So we're starting the time at 7:37, my clock is correct? So if we haven't concluded all public speakers by 8:07, then whatsoever remaining will carry over to the end of the agenda.
Mr. City Clerk, may you please facilitate our public comment section? Thank you.
Yes, Mayor. First speaker is Tila Gregorian, followed by Ana Jurado.
Good evening, city council members, city staff, and residents. My name is Tila Gregorian, and I would like to take the time out to thank Angie Jimenez for the wonderful luncheons she had for the mothers of Monteballo. It was quite, really very, very nice, and she even had mariachis for us, so it was even, made it even nicer. So thanks again, Angie, for your wonderful gift to the mothers of the city. And then I would also like to question as to why you want to start the meetings earlier? There's a lot of people at work and would like to attend meetings, but the earlier you start, the more people we're going to lose attending meetings. I guess that's it. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ana Jurado, followed by the students from Shore High School.
Good evening, council, mayor. Madam Mayor, I'm still in a quandary about your citizenship, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention on Memorial Day. I see your eyes, so please don't roll them. On Memorial Day, there's certain protocol and decorum, and I hope you could follow that. Nobody speaks before the presentation of colors, Pledge of Allegiance, or the Stars Bangle banner. And I just would appreciate if that would be recognized and be respected. Also, I'd also like to thank Ms. Jimenez, council member. We did have a good time. It was a very nice day for the Mother's Day, especially with the mariachis. And also, I'd like to, oh, I was hoping that parking stall in the site over here would be refreshed for the veterans, and it still hasn't been touched. I mean, I haven't been there a couple of days unless it has, but it would be nice to have it refreshed instead of spending so much money on other things. This is something that I don't mind my tax dollars paying for. And also, I'm wondering, you know, I've had residents ask me that why is it not called Monteballo Golf Course? I don't know what to tell them, you know? I go to the market, they see me, they ask me, "What happened?" You know what happened? I says, "I don't know. I don't know what to tell them, so maybe you can let us know? Who did it? And why they changed it? And it's not Monteballo? It's a city in Monteballo I'm proud of. I've been here since the 60s, and it would have been nice to say Monteballo Golf Course." I've even had golfers tell me, "Why did they change it?" I have no idea. I can't answer that. I can't even lie to them about it. Basically, that's it. And like I said, there's a certain protocol that I hope is remembered on that day, and nobody speaks before the Pledge of Allegiance, or the Color Guard, the Pledge of Allegiance, or the Stars Bangle. No speeches, please. I'd appreciate that very much on behalf of all veterans, and thank you very much. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Jurado. Next speaker?
Next speaker, the students from Shore High School, followed by Yitzel Gutierrez. We have Fabian, Krista, Valeria, and Jade. Jada?
Good evening. My name is Valeria Estrella, and today I'm speaking on behalf of Shore High School. We're talking about the Veterans Memorial in the Monteballo Park. The Veterans Memorial pays tribute to the men and women who served in the armed forces. The memorial was originally constructed in 1987. Atop the memorial lies an eternal flame.
Hello, my name is Fabian Hader, and I'll be talking about, more about this eternal flame. Within this eternal flame, we can look into possible impacts that have occurred within Monteballo, such as CO2 emissions and also funding to actually make this flame come to life. So talking more about CO2, we can see that within Monteballo alone, when we have this eternal flame, it's actually causing a lot of harmful pollutants to occur within our atmosphere, and this is actually causing a lot of our, you know, agriculture, a lot of our fauna floor and all sorts of animal life to essentially be in a set stage of dilemma. And more so, talking about funding as well, when we try to, try to make sure we have enough funding to make this eternal flame last forever, it actually costs a lot. So mainly within our eternal flame, we really need to look at our agriculture, our plant life economy, and also looking at more so funding per year, as these are two crucial means for our city alike. Thank you.
My name is Krista Torres. What I have to say about this is that there's many solutions that we can use for, instead of having the eternal flame. One solution can be a battery-operated flame. This is really cost-efficient, and it's also a really good way to create a memorial for the veterans. Another thing we can do is like an interactive kiosk, and this is really cool because not only can a lot of people that walk by the park and they can interact with it, but they can also like see the names of many of the people that have sacrificed their lives. And there's also the natural flames, which are a lot better as they do not release carbon emissions into the air.
Good evening. I'm Jane Ortega. The solution that we propose would be a statue erected in place of the eternal flame. That statue would be in the same shape as the flame, although it would be modern yet timeless. So it would last us, presumably, like the next 50 years. It'd be a one-time purchase, so there'd be no more emissions after its construction date, as well as no further cost to fuel the flame.
Thank you very much, Torres, our high school students. We appreciate the public comments. Thank you.
Next speaker is Yitzel Gutierrez, followed by Joseph Sanchez.
Good afternoon, city council members. I am Yitzel Gutierrez, and we are students from Shore High School, and we're here to propose a solution about safety concerns we have about our local parks. Many people enjoy the local parks, but we are unable to stay there no later than 6:00 as it begins to get dark. We're here to propose more lighting at the parks, a security guard that watches over the park, and replacing the woodchips used at the bottom of the playground to foam.
Hello, my name is Ariana Galvez, and we're here because we want a safer park with lighting and guards on shift 24/7 and a foam bottom for safety. Why we want this to happen is because we're concerned with the safety hazards that happen once it becomes darker. If you notice, at the park, it becomes really dark and there's not as much lighting going on. So we would like lights and security to help with these safety hazards and to prevent any theft, kidnappings, or any injuries that could happen at the park. We would also like to see cleaner bathrooms with supplies needed such as soap, toilet paper, and towels. And we would really like to see this implemented sooner so that we could see more safety for our community.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and thank you for participating in our democratic process today.
Next speaker is Joseph Sanchez, followed by Lorraine Quinones.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'm just up here because I know this weekend we had, well, actually, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, I think it was, the ICSC. I'm not too sure who attended. I know you guys are going to talk about your travel, the AAB1234. So I just, it's easier for me to just address everyone at once. I don't know if you're going to speak on it or not, but was Washington Boulevard brought up at the ICSC? If it wasn't brought up, I just want to document it that it wasn't brought up. If it was brought up, can you share if it was brought up? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Lorraine Quinones, followed by Vicente Quinones.
Hello, good evening. I'm Lorraine Quinones. As you all mentioned, I am the founder and also the president of Cruising is Not a Crime 5013C and big advocate and proponent for Assembly Bill 436, Cruising is Not a Crime, which got repealed January 2024, and cruising was no longer a crime as of January 1st. And on May 3rd recently, 2024, I was bombarded with messages regarding the red curb at Monteballo Park that was painted. It was not red before. The images received of the curb were extremely upsetting. This area or space is used frequently on Sundays by the car clubs and/or lowriders in classic cars. This action came suddenly without any communication or decision-making process and/or transparency in the process. As a community member who makes use of the park... As a community member who makes use of the park, we should be included in such decisions and/or provided an opportunity to support any issues of concern as opposed to making decisions that may lead to mistrust or appear discriminatory in nature. This action offended our lowrider community, who have gathered at the park for decades with no problems. It seemed to have targeted us as lowriders and classic car community members due to the lack of communication or willingness to collaborate on concerns related to Monobello Park and those that use that space. This could have been an opportunity to build and start off on the right foot, but now we're working backwards. This administrative decision probably panicked, I don't know, because it was Cinco de Mayo weekend when it occurred, and it ended up backfiring. Following AB 436, that became effective, right, on January 2024, the lowrider community seems to be continued with criminalization, stigmatization, and being marginalized or racially profiled. We will continue to call out the areas that violate our First Amendment rights to gather peacefully. This is America, and we are entitled to the same constitutional rights as everyone else. We are civilized, rational citizens, and we are always open to discussions and are supporting the communities we cruise and make space of. City of Monobello should have reached out to start with. The red curb was corrected thanks to the work of another group that I believe you all failed to notify or include. Now, we are heavily policed at the park, so that's still a new issue that we're facing. As a lowrider community, we've always gathered there, and we welcome patrol. We understand law enforcement has a job, and we welcome that. But prior, or following January 1st, 2024, there's been an excessive amount of police cars surveillance parked. I have photos to submit. We've been taking video as well to document how much we are being surveilanced and patrolled, which never was the case before. We demand that stop, and we communicate on better terms with transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinones. Can we please have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Vicente Quinones, followed by Linda Nicholas.
Yes, I'd like to speak on behalf of the residents of Monobello. We have seen discrimination firsthand in 2024 within the city. The community members are appalled by your decisions to, you know, just go and paint curbs red without even taking into consideration what goes on in your public parks. We have elderly folks who go and do exercises. We have community members that, you know, go and train kids, you know, for different sports. Those curbs are needed for the community to have access. Not everybody is able to walk. Not everybody is able to move. So, you know, what we have witnessed within the community is blatant discrimination. On behalf of the city of Monobello, you should be ashamed by, you know, discriminating against elderly and people of color in the year of 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quinones. Can we please have our next speaker?
Next speaker is Linda Nicholas, followed by Rosa Tamayo.
Good evening. My name is Linda Nicholas, co-founder of Match 90640, address on file. This evening, I am directing my comments to Councilwoman Tamayo. At the last meeting of substation for the police department in the southern part of the city was discussed. The mayor instead said dock parks are more important than the safety of the residents in the south section of our city. I didn't see anything enlisted when they were going over the different projects, but they did include the dock park. We ask you, Ms. Tamayo, to vote for your residents' safety, even if you are not in District, if you are in District 1. With the rise of crime, please vote for a substation to prove to the residents that you're not just a paid yes vote. My question to you, Scarlett, is why Hendrick Cuna Park for the dock park? Why not at the city park? It's more accessible to more residents. Residents in the south, near Whittier Boulevard, don't have yards. People in the north, where they vote for you, where you're thinking about next election, they have homes with big yards. Make it more accessible. If you're going to force the dock park, do it on Whittier Boulevard, but make it accessible to everybody. You hear your residents, they're not happy with you guys. You're hearing, people who never came up here are telling you, you're a disappointment, and you're disappointed in your leadership. In the north part of the city, you don't think residents also have dogs? In the south, they don't have dogs? They also have dogs in the south. I'm sure if residents asked which they'd rather have, a dock park or a police substation in the south, hands down, they'd rather have a substation to win out. I would ask the city manager to notify the five council members of the allowed travel expenses voted on by previous councils, limiting the amount of travel cost to $3,500 per year. Scarlett, you wasted $7,500 going to the mayor's conference in Washington, DC, which is not for elected, it's for elected mayors. You are not an elected mayor. Monobello does not have an election for mayors. It's a rotation system. The next mayor will be Mr. Protem Salvador Melendez. Last year, Torres wasted over $9,000 for a conference he didn't belong to go to either. So unless you plan to pay for the next future conferences, such as Las Vegas, you would be breaking the law voted in by previous council regarding the travel limits. Scarlett, you spent way more than $3,500 already, so you are not entitled to go anywhere conferences. So please, listen to your residents. They're coming up here. You're seeing new faces. They're not happy with what you're doing, and they're not happy about the way the residents are being treated.
Thank you, Ms. Nicholas. Can we please have the last speaker?
Next speaker is Rosa Tamayo, followed by Raúl Hurtado.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Yo soy Rosa Tamayo, mayor, Scarlett Peralta, en...
I'm Rosa Tamayo, mayor, Scarlett Peralta.
Y, ay, disculpen, pero es que estoy pensando dos, tres cosas.
Forget it. I'm thinking about other things.
Y miembro del Consilio.
Council members.
Quiero darle las gracias a concejal Angie Jiménez, porque estuvimos muy felices y contentas disfrutando del Día de Madres, y fue una sorpresa, tanta alegría.
And I would like to thank council member Angie Jiménez for enjoying the...
Su canto tan bonito que nos brindó.
And what they're singing that she blessed us with.
También quiero decirles que miré ahorita mismo que la estación 56 de los bomberos que está en la de Greenwood tienen un proyecto de rehabilitarlo, o yo no sé qué es lo que realmente van a terminar ahí, pero...
And I'd also like to say that I saw Station 56, firemen on day in Greenwood, that they have a rehabilitation or something, I think.
Yo fui a comprar a la tienda Monarca y me di cuenta que el techo de esa estación está dañada.
I went to go by over at the store Monarca, and I saw that the, I noticed that the roof of that station is damaged.
Y la tienen con plásticos, el techo.
And they have plastic over the roof.
Eso es una vergüenza.
That's an embarrassment.
Y que se esté goteando esa estación, y para este junio estamos esperando tormentas bastante grandes.
That that station is leaking. And for this June, we're expecting some great storms.
Y no lo duden de lo que yo les digo, porque yo soy muy asertiva.
And it affected what I'm saying. I'm very accepting.
Y también les quiero decir que necesitamos una estación de policías en el sur de Montebello. Es demasiada gente y muchas cosas que están pasando.
I'd also like to say that we need a police station over in South Monobello because it's a large area and so many things that are happening.
Y prioridad es la seguridad de nosotros, los residentes.
And the priority would be the safety of us, the residents.
Y necesitamos más policías también.
We also need more police officers.
También, este, no es prioridad ahora mismo el parque de perros, porque prioridad es nosotras las personas.
The dock park isn't a priority right now. The priority would be us, the people.
Nos están pasando muchas cosas en el sur de Montebello, que se necesita la seguridad.
So many things are happening to us over in South Monobello that we need the safety.
Y no voy a decir qué está pasando porque yo soy un poco discreta a veces, ¿verdad? Pero, pero en una ciudad ya hubo un niño muerto en una, en un parque, y yo tengo unas sospechas de que hay un negocio de fentanilo en los parques.
And I'm not going to say what, what things are going on, because I'm a discreet person sometimes, but there was a dead child in the city, so I have my suspicions. There's something in the parks.
Y la otra cosa es que se viene el día de este holiday de veteranos, pero Rosa Salao protege mucho a los veteranos, y también por eso la provisión que tiene a Rosa Salao es la protección al derecho civil de la vivienda para todos ellos.
And also, this upcoming holiday that's coming up for the veterans, Rosa Salao is there for to protect it.
Y nos hace falta más proyectos de viviendas. No hay realmente nada para... Hay uno, pero ni se ha terminado, pero necesitan moverse más para traer viviendas accesibles.
For housing, and we need more projects for housing, because you need to move a little more to be able to have more housing.
La renta está, la renta está, está muy carísima.
Rent is very expensive.
Y la, y los veteranos ahora mismo están como en, el cheque de ellos es como de 1,200 a 1,400, máximo 1,600. Si un cuarto es de 1,000...
And the veterans, what they get paid with, their wages, 1,200 to 1,400, at the most, 1,600.
Y la vivi...
And their rents are...
Un cuarto, un cuarto solamente es para 1,800.
A room would be just 1,800.
Así que pónganse a trabajar y traer más viviendas, por favor.
So get to work and bring more housing, please.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Tamayo. If we can please have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Raúl Hurtado, followed by, sorry, followed by Camila Chan.
I want to continue from where I left off the last time. You told me I could come back. But first, I want to clarify. It's not my intention to deprive her of her Spanish speaking for six minutes, if she wants. It's my objective to not have the city pay for it. I've got the receipts, the invoices. That's thousands of dollars. I'm sure there's not one of you up there that wouldn't take $10,000 to use in your community, that many residents can enjoy. Park benches, fix a sidewalk, trim a tree. Personally, I'd like that money to go to the chief's, the police chief's vision for a safer Monobello where all the residents can enjoy, not just one person, a greedy person. We have opportunity. One of the other things that we can use is hire bilingual staff. We have that. We can use that and save the money. That's all I'm asking, you know? That's all. I don't like to see waste, and that is waste. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurtado. May I please have the next speaker?
Next speaker is Camila Chan, followed by Susan Karapetian.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Camila Chan, and I'm a current senior at Mark Apple High School. I'm also a Girl Scout who was awarded Citizen of the Month last summer in May for my Girl Scout Gold Award project. During the summer, I hosted workshops in YNCA Monobello, teaching students about different Asian cultures through interactive activities. Ultimately, my project aims to spread the message of building more united communities by respecting and exploring different cultures. Another part of my project was publishing a children's book titled Hidden Jewels of Asia. When I was awarded Citizen of the Month last year, I distinctly remember promoting my book with the 94 cents prototype from Staples and reaching out to potential sponsors on a weekly basis. Nonetheless, City of Monobello council members and directors helped promote my project on the city newspaper, Instagram, and Facebook. Now standing in the exact same spot one year ago, I have fundraised over $5,000, printed 700 copies of my book, and distributed them to Girl Scout troops, libraries, and schools from California to New York. I want to take this time to express my greatest gratitude and thanks to Mr. Darrell Hunt, Mr. David Sisnowski, Mr. Paul Parzak, my parents, and City of Monobello city council members for supporting my project's cause. Without your help, my message would not have been able to reach the coverage it has today. And lastly, to every person in this room, your unique differences matter in the community, and so do the other people around you. If you're interested in learning more about Asian cultures or my project, you can visit my website at hiddenjewelsofasia.com. Again, hiddenjewelsofasia.com. Or if you would like to read my book, there are copies actually outside in the Monobello City Hall, Parks and Rec, Cathy Henzel Youth Center, Monobello Senior Center, and City Administration. Again, thank you, City Council, for your support towards the youth. Thank you, everyone, for your time, and Happy Asian American Pacific Islander Month.
Thank you so much, Camila.
And our final speaker is Susan Karapetian.
Good evening, council members. I'm here. I live by Hendrick Cuna Park. I don't know who authorized the doggy park, the soccer players. The city is not thinking about the neighbors that live there. My backyard is, I'm on 18th, so my backyard is the park. I don't know if you can get that vision. We get the tents, pop-ups. We hear the chairs that they rent. The people rent the chairs, bring it to the park. There's a lot of problems at this park that's not getting addressed. I've been talking to David. David's doing the best he can, but, you know, there's only so much time he can be there. So now we're going to add a doggy park to the picture. We're going to have more noise. Now we're going to have the dogs barking besides the mariachis and the kids yelling and screaming soccer with their whistle blowing. We don't get any peace and quiet. So I need that addressed. I need that taken care of. We don't want a doggy park there. I don't want it because we don't have any peace and quiet. You have to think about your neighbors. Be friendly to your neighbors. So please be friendly to your neighbors, because we don't have any peace and quiet there. About the tents and stuff, you shouldn't allow so many tents. You shouldn't allow so many people into that park and throwing up all these tents and all these birthday parties and whatever they're doing there at the park. You should have one of those shelter tents, put in shelter tents, only designate so many people, you know, so many shelter tents, and you can have only so many people there. Rent them out rather than just, you know, letting this going out of control. That's about it, I think. But no doggy park. Add the $650,000 to the police. It's a waste of money. Or go put it somewhere else. Monobello Park would be perfect because it's more, there's not so many houses there. It doesn't belong right here at Hendrick Cuna. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Susan, and I believe that concludes our public comments. Okay? And so, moving forward, we, give me a second here. Okay? And so moving forward, we, give me a second here. So no items on regular business, but we are pulling number, item number seven for a presentation. Um, for consent calendar, Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the statement of approval for consent and allow council to pull items of discussion apart from item number seven?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. We now are in the consent calendar. Uh, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine. Any item a member, the member wishes to discuss, including any and all items, uh, in which a public speaker card has been submitted, should be designated at this time. All other items may be approved in a single motion, and such approval will also waive the reading of any ordinance. Let me start with, are there any speaker cards for, uh, the consent agenda with the exclusion of item seven?
Uh, yes, the only speaker card we have is for agenda item number seven.
Okay, thank you. At this time, then, I'll poll the council, starting with, um, tonight is Councilmember Torres. Any items, and these are items five through seventeen with the exclusion of number seven.
Yes, Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to pull items six and twelve.
Six and, which one, other? Moving on, Mayor Protem Melendez.
No items.
Councilmember Jimenez.
No items.
Councilmember Tomayo.
No further items.
And Mayor Peralta.
No further items as well.
At this time, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve items five, eight. Excuse me, can, can we have the chatter in the audience, please stop? It's interrupting the, the business tonight. Thank you. Five, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. A motion would be needed to that.
Okay, can I, can I get a motion for the items stated onto the record?
Motion.
Motion to.
Okay, motion by, uh, Councilmember Jimenez, and can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, may I please get roll call?
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye. And so the first item is?
Item six.
Item six, yes.
Councilmember Torres, questions or concerns that, um, staff can answer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the main question I have with this item is how this differs from the ADA Improvement Plan's sidewalk access compliance survey. Um, when reviewing that plan, um, and it's several thousand, thousand pages, I think if you flip through it, you get, you get a pretty good idea without getting too specific. Um, but the report includes streets, parks, and city facilities and its assessment for ADA accessibility and, uh, you know, anyone that would have a, a challenge, uh, you know, perhaps, uh, walking or, or, um, or that's mobility impaired. It marks pavement dislocation, along with the cost of repair, priority, and severities. Uh, so I was just wondering if staff could explain how this item is differentiated from the, um, ADA Improvement Plan?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Torres. Uh, so Precision Concrete Cutting is, uh, has a propriety in the equipment that it uses. Um, in essence, uh, I contacted them because what they do is, is a cost-saving measure in which, you know, for the most part, whenever a sidewalk is lifted, broken, cracked, and so forth, uh, we usually get, uh, funding to remove and replace it, to actually remove the root, and that costs several thousands of dollars. Um, in essence, if we look at the Public Works budget, there isn't much into the replacement of concrete. Um, in essence, if I wanted to come to City Council and replace all the concrete that is broken, cracked, and razored and so forth and not ADA compliant, we'd probably be wasting in excess of twenty to thirty million dollars. So what, uh, Precision Concrete actually does is, uh, they look at it from their vantage point in which they do a, uh, vertical cut. And then, uh, what they do is it makes it ADA compliant. Uh, they're in and out of one specific spot within a couple of minutes, like thirty minutes or so. They have a, um, vacuum in, in their equipment that sucks up all the dust, and then they just move on. Um, and technically, they're not gonna do that per se, but in their analysis of the city, uh, they're gonna provide us with the recommendation to do that. And at some point in time, we would then evaluate that with the City Manager's Office to see if that's a viable option that we can actually, uh, take a look at. And that's much more expensive and efficient than removing and replacing several sections of panels of sidewalk. Uh, so, uh, that is an excellent question, though the ADA Transition Plan does touch on that. Um, but this is more of a specific fix that we would come back to you sometime in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six to see about investing, uh, which is, it's, it's definitely way, it's a way cheaper option than it is to rip and replace.
And, and I appreciate that, um, you know, in reading through how their technology works, um, the quality of the work that they do, the way that the system works, um, I'm very interested in seeing this work done. I mean, I think it's one of the more, uh, common complaints that, uh, possibly follows potholes and, and other kinds of street repairs is, you know, that people's, um, sidewalks have been lifted and they're worried about tripping and falling. Um, I mean, just some of the things that came out of that report, talking about how Montebello has a hundred and ninety-four miles of sidewalks, um, and with their technology, how they could complete a hundred and fifty sidewalk repairs, up to a hundred and fifty repairs per day. Um, it is very interesting. Um, I'm just, I guess I'm just hoping that, to the extent that the survey that we've done is helpful, that that can be incorporated somehow, um, and perhaps cut down on the time that it takes to locate these or find them or, or, um, uh, you know, compile them into, into a database. But, um, I appreciate that, Mr. Roldán, uh, for the, um, responses, and Madam Mayor, that's all my questions.
Okay, if I can please get a motion to approve, um, item six?
I'll motion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Torres. Can I please get a second?
I'll second.
And second by our Mayor Protem. Uh, Mr. City Clerk, may you please do roll call?
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
I have a question, I'm sorry. Um, did we go to bid for this, or is this like sole source?
Uh, so we did not. Uh, in the staff report, uh, I, I justify that it's a sole source because of their proprietary system. Uh, in essence, like I stated, if we go to a regular bid for just removal and replacement of concrete, uh, that's excessively more expensive than their option. Um, and because we would potentially look at their option in the future, uh, part of the report is they're gonna give us a cost to do the work, and then, of course, uh, you know, a follow-back presentation in front of the City Council to see if they would like to do that. But, uh, a cross-comparison between removal and replacement or a full-depth concrete root guard and potentially removing trees because we have to remove the, the root, for example, uh, that's extremely more costly. And then residents also have no side rock in front of their homes, for example, or a driveway approach for long lead periods because we're, you know, bringing in concrete. Uh, so that's why we went with Precision Concrete Cutting. There's no other, uh, outfits out there that do what they do, and that's why it's a sole source.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. City Clerk?
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye, and the item passes. Uh, moving forward to item number seven, um, we...
Okay, um, so item twelve, um, was pulled by Councilmember Torres. Uh, the floor is yours.
Uh, so this is a question for staff regarding the, um, pavement rehabilitation project for Plaza Drive. Just reviewing the item, I was thinking about its location and the adjacent Metro Heights, uh, which is currently entering Phase B for construction, uh, and just wanted to, um, express concern and if maybe we could, uh, you know, take a further look at whether or not there are gonna be extensive impacts from any kind of construction activities for utilities, so gas, water, sewer power, um, that we might anticipate over the next few years as that part of the project is being built out.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember, once again. That's an excellent question. I ask myself that same question. Digging further into a lot of the things that we've done in Public Works for the last four months, um, I've become a better detective than in the past. Um, you know, part of the issue with this is that the city actually, uh, exchanged funds through Metro, so the time is ticking. And one of the biggest items about, you know, resurfacing that street or full reconstruction is it won't take as long as it was to design it, right? And so, um, since we have to finish this project by twenty-twenty-six, um, otherwise we lose the funding, we lose nine hundred and something thousand dollars. I think it's imperative that technically it should have started in twenty-twenty-three, and I should be coming to you right now with the construction bid instead. I'm barely starting the design. And so it's, I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, we kind of march forward with the design, and then we wait to coordinate with the contractor that's doing work. Um, because, you know, we were up there last week looking at the homes, and I was not aware about all the little things that they're actually working with. So in reality, what's gonna happen is we're gonna design this project. We probably won't start it till probably October or November of twenty-twenty-five, once they've done much more work, like you've stated. Um, and then, you know, it won't take that much longer to resurface thereafter. Um, but I also have the same concerns. Excellent observation. Um, I personally would have not chosen this street. I'm not really sure why they chose this street. Uh, but it's also an agreement that we signed with Metro several years back. Um, so it's, it's kind of one of those streets that's, that's way out there. Um, doesn't really serve a lot of the entire community of the city. Um, but, you know, with the new addition of homes, obviously, they're gonna use it much more in the future. But like I said, it was a metro exchange of surface transportation program local STPL funds back in twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen.
Okay, so you still have some time until construction, I mean...
Yeah, we have till twenty-twenty-six to finish, yeah, but I just wanna get ahead of the design. Um, just 'cause, um, that street's also not in the best shape also. Um, and it does need a little bit of love. You know, the hard part is that it's, it's a steep hill, right? So we're trying to find ways to, like, slow down traffic as well. But I, I do appreciate your vigilance on that, and that's very astute of you to look into that.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and Madam Mayor, that's all my questions.
Yeah, and if I may add, I think, um, we've all had very similar concerns in terms of investing money to repave our roads and then having utilities cut in. Um, and, you know, uh, the road ends up not looking as nice as before. And so, um, I think it was the, I think it was City of Chico, um, but as best practice, one of the cities, uh, from a Legal California Cities Conference that I attended, they shared that they actually, um, I believe on a yearly basis, they sit down with their utilities, uh, utility companies, and they share the capital improvement projects yearly as well as a five-year plan um, to really, uh, work collaboratively and ensure that any, any, um, work that the utilities might do can go in conjunction with, um, the, the streets being repaved and cut out just so that all that work is being, uh, done, uh, prior to the streets then being repaved, and that then saves us the, uh, opportunity of, of having these streets, um, you know, being cut into after spending so much money. And so as a best practice, you know, definitely encouraging, um, that we do work closely, um, with our utilities and, and making them aware of our future projects to see if we can, um, you know, kind of save, uh, some of these streets that might be cut into after the, after the fact that they are repaved. Um, but other than that, thank you for, um, for your answer today, and if I can please, uh, receive a motion to approve the item?
Madam Mayor, with that comment, um, I will motion to, um, approve the item with the, um, added direction to staff that, uh, perhaps we look into what Chino does um, and see, you know, um, what that would be like coordinating with our utilities.
Is that something that, um, would be feasible moving forward for the other, you know, other projects?
Unless, unless these are...
Yeah, I wanted to interject there, uh, Mayor. I appreciate you talking about that. Uh, in my former life, every six months, we would have a conversation with all the utilities. You know, I would invite them for coffee, and we would have discussion of all our projects with the hope that they would also share their projects. Um, and it's imperative because, you know, we have a five-year moratorium here, right? Uh, and, uh, what I do not like is for us not to be transparent and open about our projects and then just give, say, a contractor or a utility company a couple of weeks of notice that, hey, we're gonna pave. You know, it's not really fair to them. They also have a board that they have to go to or they have to go to the California PUC to tell them about future projects, and a lot of times, they're five years out. Um, and it's an excellent idea on your end, too. I'm, I'm, I'm on board with that, I, with that concept of us having, uh, say, meetings every six months or so with all the utilities. And the city manager did bring that to my attention a couple of months ago when I first started.
Perfect. Okay, um, so may I receive a motion to approve?
I'll second.
There was a motion by Councilmember Torres.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Torres. Can I please get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second by our Mayor Protem. Mr. City Clerk, may you please do roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye, and so that takes us to item number twelve. Um, I believe we do have also a presentation, or no, wait, item seven, um, pulled for presentation.
Mayor, and we do, uh, have one speaker card for this item.
Okay, so we can go ahead and, uh, move forward with, uh, public comments for this item?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have Raúl Hurtado for agenda item number seven.
Uh, I believe that this is for a proposal for trash hauling, item number seven? Uh, for what Athens holds now, I guess, and I just wanna understand, uh, approve a solicitation of proposals from existing qualified and eligible City of Montebello franchise saw. What does eligible mean? What do you mean? Uh, let me finish here before, because I know Mr. Glassman doesn't like a lot of questions. Uh, I have a couple of properties in East Los Angeles, and a few years ago, I decided to look into what I was paying for, because it comes on the tax bill. And, uh, each property or each address was sixteen dollars a month. And I looked up Montebello, and it was twenty-four dollars a month. That's been a few years ago. And as I gradually look at it, the properties in East Los Angeles are still sixteen dollars a month, and Athens is almost thirty-two dollars now, twice as much. What makes Montebello's trash so expensive to pick up? I don't understand that. You know, and another thing is that for years and years, as far as I can remember, Athens has been the, the sole, uh, trash picker-upper here, and, uh... If I'm not mistaken, Athens gives to you for your elections or whatever, maybe, maybe not all of you, but that has been happening for years and years, and I'm gonna assume, and I'm, I could be wrong, when Mr. Glassman was on the council, too, maybe he received some money from Athens. I, I just wanna say, remember, nothing is for free. You're getting those donations, but we, the residents, are paying for them, and I think that's totally wrong. So what I'm proposing here for you guys, to be absolutely transparent on these bids. Go apples for apples and oranges for oranges. Let us see the bids, the way they come in. Who did you put it out to? I don't understand, because you have the, uh, Republic and Consolidated pick up the trash at my places over there. I think they would be eligible to do it if they do it for the big cities. So, you know, submit. Get the, uh, how should I say, the proposals out to a lot of people, and then show us. And don't make exceptions, because Athens, I'm, I'm assuming Athens is gonna lower their price now because they're gonna say, well, we have the trash cans out there already, so we can do it cheaper. Well, they could have done that cheaper a long time ago. As far as I'm concerned, Athens shouldn't even be, be allowed to bid the way they've been jerking around for all these years, stealing from us. Anyway, I just want to make sure that everything is very transparent. Let us have a copy of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurtado. Uh, that concludes public comments, and we do have a presentation today for this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. What is before you now is a brief presentation on the pertinent aspects of the RFP, so that you will be fully aware of the process that's going on and who is eligible and what services that are included within the RFP. that are included within the RFP.
Jeff, do you want to introduce yourself, just so we know?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, my name is Jeff Cameron. I'm with MCA Consultants and we are the environmental and solid waste consultants for the city. The purpose of the RFP right now is to issue companies, to solicit companies that are in good standing with the city of Monobello, um, that have met all the city requirements and basically provide, uh, residential services, uh, for solid waste, recycling, organics, and also C and D and bulky item collections. The intent of the RFP is to issue a single franchise that will cover the entire city for a period of 10 years, uh, with two review periods, one at five years and one at seven years. That would allow the city council to review their services and evaluate them after five years and also after seven years to make sure that they are fully compliant with the Some of the goals, um, that you'll see up here is to conduct the RFP process in a open and, um, transparent process with integrity. That means keeping it open, letting, that's why we're having this presentation, so that everybody is fully aware. Also to, and I'm sorry, it's a little difficult with my glasses, um, but also to provide an effective, um, environmental sound program. So what we've done is we've actually looked at these and said, okay, what are the programs? What is, what is the city looking for and what is going to make that to where we need to be? Also to, and I really apologize for this. sorry, I have my wrong glasses on my, thank you. Also to preserve and protect the environmental health and safety. So that means that the successful hauler will be required to meet all of the environmental standards that, uh, that not only the state has imposed, but also AQMD, uh, by using alternative fuel vehicles and those that are compliant with green, uh, vehicles. Also to provide a solid waste, a long-term solid waste management program and collection for the diversion to meet state mandates, to implement programs that divert waste from landfills and other forms of incineration, and also to make sure that we're compliant with green waste, C and D, and comply with legislative requirements for organics, which the city is currently implementing. This will also, um, provide a rate stabilization. The rate stabilization is designed to lay out, uh, anticipated rates, not only for now, but also for the next 10 years. And so one of the programs that we're asking them for is to provide those services with details which we'll cover in a moment. The residential solid waste and recycling services are provided by Athens since 1984 and that was approved under Agreement 688. And since then, the residential contract has been renewed, uh, upon, uh, presentation to council. The current, uh, contract term expires in the second quarter of two, of 2025. And that is why this is coming before you now, to allow council adequate time to put out a solicitation to those companies that are currently licensed in Monobello and currently are meeting all of the standards that the city has set forth in not only Chapter Eight, but also Chapter, uh, eight point one two, but also eight point one three, and are compliant with all state mandates. This covers single-family residential dwellings and units and also duplexes and triplexes. It includes, as I mentioned before, uh, solid waste, recycling, organics, yard trim, and also bulky item collections, and the services are billed, uh, onto the property taxes. Some of the essential services that we're looking at for the residential is a standardized cart. What this involves is there will be a designated cart size that, uh, we've looked at and the city has had historically on various sizes, which are listed here, but also takes into account space limitations and other options for different sized parcels, depending on the amount that they generate. Um, and that's an important part. And one of the things that we are doing in this by setting in the RFP a designated rate. So we are saying, asking the haulers to bid, provide their services based on these, not on what they have, but based on what we have. It does give, um, an apples-to-apples comparison when it comes to pricing. Temporary bin box collection, what those are is those temporary roll-off containers that people have. This will also be covered on that, so we don't have, um, other haulers or rogue haulers that are not licensed in the city that are coming in and dropping those. It also provides for holiday tree collection, uh, senior, disabled and infirm valet service, which is offered to those that qualify, and also a 24-hour mess and center and city-owned buildings are collected as well. Part of this core residential services, uh, cart program that we've offered is automated carts and which they currently have, but the important point of this is part of this service, the successful hauler is going to have to demonstrate how they're going to achieve a 75% diversion, which is a state mandate. And that is incumbent upon, not only, that's, uh, something that has been put on the commercial haulers and is now being placed under this RFP on the residential haulers as well. The uniform cart markings, those are something so that, uh, it is legislatively enacted and, and set forth on the color markings of the carts. That way it will be very clear to anybody, excuse me, regardless of language or ability to read, what goes into a certain cart. They'll be designated by color and those will all be uniform. All the connect, all the collection carts will be brand new. So as we're going through the RFP, so that, um, you know, existing services or whatever, everybody will have to bid on the same service, regardless of whether or not they have carts in place or not. Um, the green weight collection carts, 95, unlimited green waste, uh, C and D, and the bulky item collections, in order for them to put forth, they will have to meet a hierarchy of how they're collecting those and processing those. Reuse as is, disassembly, uh, disassemble, donate, recycle, and then dispose is the very last option. The residential service also includes a valet service for physically, um, disabled members of the community or those that are unable to bring their carts to the service. A low-income senior discount of 10%, provided that they qualify as part of the care program. Holiday tree recycling, a free mulch giveaway for residents, and removal of the existing carts. So part of this program also requires the successful hauler to remove or coordinate with the existing hauler, the removal of all of the carts and replace all of the uniform services. The multifamily, um, is very similar to what the residential is. However, the commercial bin service that we're looking at is this is for four or fewer units and instead of a cart service, they have more of a, a bin type service, which would be a 1.5, 2, and 3 cubic yard capacity. That way that would be standardized and that would be dependent upon space and also what are the needs on that multifamily property? What is their waste generation? How are they processing it? And they would have to provide all of the same services as well. Just similar, as similar to the residential and the commercial, the multifamily is also required. The successful hauler will also be required to demonstrate how they're going to achieve a 75% diversion. The other items on here, the bulky item collection and the holiday tree recycling, those are the, the same as, uh, with the residential. Other services, a citywide quarterly cleanup program. This will be something that they will provide at no charge to the city. This is something that every quarter, the city will have the option, um, to request a certain amount of bins, where they will then have it for community cleanups or whatever they, um, drop off, as we just had on, um, Earth Day, that we had at some of the parks, and this will be available to residents, however, or however the city selects to utilize these services. Clean air vehicles, and this is one that I know the city was, uh, looking at, uh, very importantly, is we're requiring them to use clean air vehicles, either CNG or green, uh, diesel, or those vehicles that will comply with AQMD, uh, Rule 1193. Now, we also looked at it that said that whoever the successful hauler is, will be required within one year to provide either all the vehicles or provide a plan as to how they're going to come into compliance within the first five years of providing service. None of their vehicles can be older than five years old, because anything older than five years old, um, would, uh, essentially put them out of compliance with 1193. So we wanted to make sure that they were able to do that. They almost be registered, uh, to whoever is providing the service. So what that does is it prevents anybody from subcontracting, a successful hauler from going to another, uh, company and saying, well, we can't do it, but we're licensed in Monobello, so we're going to subcontract out to somebody else. Uh, this would allow, this would require them to own all of their own vehicles. That way they are the ones with the liability and there's no liability that's passed on to others. And again, they will also have to hit a recycling rate of 75%. The release of the RFP we're looking at is, uh, with your approval, would be released tomorrow. Uh, we would allow by June 30th, the first round of questions. Those questions would be submitted through the city clerk's office and that way everything is documented. All communication that would be, um, regarding this, regarding the solicitation, would be sent through the city clerk's office. Uh, replies would be July 10th with proposal dates of September 3rd and tentative council award of October of 2023, I mean, 23rd of 2024. The idea behind this and the timeline is set forth is to allow the successful hauler adequate time to not only, uh, develop their own system, to procure their carts, but also coordinate with the existing hauler to, uh, provide those services to make sure that they are covered. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, so going down, uh, roll call, I'll see if any of my colleagues have any questions. Um, give me a second here. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, um, a couple, uh, questions and comments. And this just came from, from the presentation, uh, some of the information that we've seen before, but I was wondering, uh, what information should we be, um, tracking and paying attention to leading up to those five and seven review, uh, five and seven year review periods?
That's a great question. Um, one of the things that we've set forth is, one of the important things is, are they compliant with the city of Monobello's codes? Those are those that are set forth in Chapter eight point one two and eight point one three regarding the organics. The important things I would be looking at setting forth on this are, we look at things such as on time, you know, are they, are they being responsible? Are they picking up? Are they missing customers? Are there customer complaints? How are they responding to customer complaints? And increase. These are all items that would be specified in the RFP and are specified in the RFP as those key milestones or those key provisions. But a lot of those things that will come up, uh, in, you know, once a successful firm is awarded and they begin the contract negotiations as far as those specific, but I would leave those, you know, specifically to, to staff to make the ultimate determination.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Um, uh, I have a few comments for staff, um, just looking through the RFP. One is that, uh, on page 98 of the RFP, the section regarding rate adjustments in Section 3.13, if it could just be slightly clarified that the rate adjustments, uh, are up to plus or minus 3% the way that it reads, and I'm sure that, that, that the industry would understand and that companies would understand, but just for clarity, um, that it's not fixed at 3% per year. Uh, the second, um, and this would be a consideration for my colleagues and, and staff and of course, Mr. Cameron, you as well, but there's a lot of great benefits in the program that the city is setting at a basic, basic standard for our residents, uh, whether you're a senior or, or disabled in getting the valet service, whether you can get, um, different sized containers, um, the ability to have a cost savings, um, if you wanted to downsize, bulky item e-waste, all of that stuff is fantastic. I don't know if those services are necessarily advertised and if our residents would be aware of them. And so adding in the requirement that at least once a year, that kind of like the, that full scope of what residents can benefit from is made known. Um, I know, uh, you know, when it comes to e-waste, a lot of us wait for the day, maybe something comes up, we can't make it. It'd be great to know that we can set that out, you know, with advanced notice and that that could be picked up. Uh, so adding that requirement into the RFP. And that would be for the consideration of my colleagues and if there's anything that I'm not thinking of or anything that would bar that, then, you know, I'm happy to receive that feedback.
Councilmember, we're happy to incorporate that. Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
And then just, uh, very quickly in response to, um, one of our resident comments as to the, the prices, uh, that we deal with and just on quick review of a long history that we have with Athens, but, uh, the prices were suppressed for a long time due to litigation and at the settlement of that, uh, we did have a statement from the, um, city manager at the time that stated that through this agreement, the people of Monobello will continue to receive the highest level of service possible at the most competitive rates available. Um, so I just, uh, also wanted to note that, um, in response to that question. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Torres. Uh, we do have, um, Mayor Potem Melendez. Do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate the, the feedback that you took from the, the first meeting, uh, that we had. My question is in regards to the organics. So on the slide that says proposed residential services, um, it lists there that, and I just want clarification, the 35-gallon organics collection, is that going to be part of the requirement, uh, for, um, for, for the companies to apply to or what is, what, what is that? Is that just, you know, if you can just explain a little bit more on?
Sure. No, that's a great question. It's one that we're, uh, kind of expanding on a little bit. City council passed ordinance 8.13, uh, which was also subject to a legislative mandate for organics recycling, SB 1383. And what that did is it required every city in every county to implement an organics recycling program with the understanding of reduction of greenhouse gases. As part of that, uh, legislation, it required cities to implement a residential and commercial recycling program for organics. And what that also did, and when council passed the resolution, is also make it a mandatory program. And it is a mandatory program, uh, through the state, uh, SB 1383, but it also now made it a local mandate as well. So, uh, the existing hauler is in the process and they have rolled out, um, existing organics carts. And those are programs that, um, all food waste, instead of going into your trash, um, actually goes into their green container and that that gets composted and recycled.
Got it. So just to clarify, the requirement would just be the green container or are we separating it from the green container to a separate organics, uh, bin?
As the, as the RFP is set forth right now, um, it will be a, it will be up to the hauler to decide how they want to do it, but right now it is, it is a requirement as long as it is, um, composted or recycled. The haulers do have the ability to provide a separate cart collection or they can mix it with their green waste, as many of them do currently.
Yeah, just for, um, as you stated, for the residents to kind of understand, it's, uh, there's trash haulers that utilize different ways to separate, uh, the organics, right? So there's trash haulers that will use a green bin and then I've seen it in other cities where there's a completely different bin for the organics. Um, you know, just preference, uh, on my end would be for, to have a separate organics bin. I know it's going to be up to the proposal and then, you know, whatever criteria is measured, we'll move forward with the RFP, but I just believe that having a separate bin will allow for, um, folks to actually, uh, move forward in the process of actually separating the organics. There's going to be a huge, huge educational campaign that's going to be needed for our residents to be able to, um, to take this law seriously and moving, uh, and separating, um, um, the food scraps and organics into, um, the proper bin. So I, I, just in my preference and, um, I, I would love to see a separate bin, uh, just specifically to the organics. I think it allows for compliance, um, uh, regulate, for, for compliance to actually take forward and, uh, in having us in the city be able to make sure that folks are actually being compliant with it. I know there's other measures with the actual, um, facility, right? Where we get reporting to see if, um, how much of the, of the separation diversion is happening, but, um, I guess just for a peace of mind, I would love to have a separate, uh, container. But, um, yeah, just my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Potem Melendez. We have, uh, Councilmember Jimenez, if any questions. Okay, um, Councilmember Tamayo?
I just, just want to stress and restate, um, the importance of the community education component part, um, to, to this RFP.
Thank you.
Okay, and I believe Councilmember Torres, you have a?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to make a small clarification as to, uh, the advertisement of services that, that would be, I'm not sure if I said this earlier, by mail.
I'm sorry.
Uh, that, that the requirement that the, uh, various services offered be advertised, um, by mail, so not digitally, like, you know, making sure that people that don't have social media or email, that it's accessible to everybody.
Understood.
Notifications typically are also sent through their, their billing, right? Their monthly billing?
Yes, that's correct.
They open their bills. Let's just say that much.
Okay, and then, um, just lastly, and Okay. And then just lastly, in response to clarify, I believe there's a question earlier from the audience in terms of just. The transparency in the process and having the RFPs and the bids that we receive being available and published to the, to the general public. From my understanding, that is what is going to, that's the process that will take place, including the scoring of the bids.
Yeah, we will have a full transparent, public and transparent process from, as was mentioned in the presentation, and it's in the RFP. Even the questions that are going to be asked, those are going to be publicly put on the website and the answers are going to be provided to staff. Now, at the point where we actually go to bring to council a recommendation, we will provide a full scoring. We will let you know which, which companies applied, what they were proposing. And we will have a full scoring sheet of what, what the recommendation is based on, you know, whether they met the criteria or didn't meet the criteria for the RFP. Yeah, but you'll have a full, full picture before council makes a decision.
Okay. Thank you for those assurances. And with that, can I please receive a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by our Mayor Protem. Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay. And a second by Councilmember Torres. Can I please get a roll call for item number seven?
Yes, Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye. And so that leads us to our AB 1234 travel reports. I will go ahead and go down the roll call order for that. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the Contract Cities Association out at Indian Wells. Attended presentations on AI and policing and various other sessions and seminars. And as always, a great opportunity to catch up with colleagues and find out what's going across the region that we can potentially bring back home.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Torres. Mayor Protem Melendez?
Yes, thank you. I also attended Contract Cities. As my colleague mentioned. I think one of the most interesting sessions was the artificial intelligence session. It's here and we're trying to see and figure out ways to, cities are trying to figure out ways to implement that. In order to advance some of the processes that are, that we can have in different departments. Essentially getting you to the point of helping you with anything you can think of in the city to where you need that human element. Advance pretty much, you know, the efficiency and the transparency in the whole process. So that's exciting to see. And it was exciting to see that presentation. Also, I attended ICSC. We had a, pretty much a full day of meetings. I don't know who counted how many miles or steps we walked all over, but it was a lot. And just to kind of highlight some of the, we met with the shops in Monobello. Some potential opportunities in our downtown area, opportunities in our Ventis, White Memorial area. And I can say that there's definitely a lot of interest and a lot of folks coming into our city. Following from the momentum of Topgolf and a lot of the work that we're doing. So it was extremely positive and productive meetings and we hope that we can bring a lot of the vendors and businesses that we had meetings with. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Jimenez?
There's nothing to report. I didn't attend any conferences.
Okay, Councilmember Tamayo?
My report is for the ICSC conference that I attended. It's one of the main focuses for council was the opportunity for economic development. We were able to meet with the owners of the commercial areas in, I'll focus on District 1 and adjacent. Which includes the Monobello Mix, which is where the Vons is located. And all in between from the shops to the Monobello Mix. We were able to have discussions on the upcoming opportunities for new shopping options for the residents of Monobello. We met with the owners and provided the city's input and vision for the shopping centers.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Tamayo. And then myself also did attend Contract Cities. And similarly, I was very intrigued by some of the sessions such as AI, which is something that we are, are all now. Having to understand and really manage and, and implement in the various sectors and works, work that we do within the city and beyond. As well as they did host a waste management session that I think very much mirrors the process that we are now going through. In the RFP that we just approved to be released. My favorite, I would say my favorite conference out of all is ICSC, which also was able to attend. That's an opportunity for us to really meet with businesses, with vendors, with developers, with property owners. To truly sell and, you know, incentivize them to invest in our city. We really had, personally, one of my favorite meetings was with the mall, the shops that here at the city of Monobello. And some of the very exciting projects and vision that they have. That hopefully in the near future can be announced, but there's a lot of good investment and I think excitement coming to that area. We also did meet with Kimco property owners, which are right in front of our new homes on the hills. And so really advocating for that site in terms of the retail space and commercial space that is there. And the opportunities that could come in the near future as we see that area expanding with more families coming to live. And providing the city as a whole, more general updated shopping options. We did meet with the new property owners of the Monobello Mix right there where we have, I'm sorry. Bonds, Rite Aid, Ross Marshals. I believe they are new. They recently took over two years ago. And so it was really great to be introduced to them and see their vision as well. As far as some of the potential businesses that they're looking to bring to the city. We also did meet with the property owners there at the Costco site. And hopefully working through a future announcement for that specific facility. We did have multiple meetings where we really promoted our new general plan. We did talk about the transit, transit-oriented district on Washington and South Monobello and the opportunities that are there. And really trying to incentivize and really sell the vision for Monobello. That includes our downtown area and reimagining that space as well. So overall, very, very productive meetings, opportunities to really put Monobello on the map and talk about the different power centers that we have. And hopefully bringing in more entertainment, dining options and retail options to the city. That concludes my summary of my report. And seeing that we do not have any council orals today, prior to adjourning, I do just want to wish a very, very happy birthday to my colleague, Councilmember Tamayo. Thank you for spending your birthday with us during this council meeting. I appreciate that, that commitment. I also do want to wish our Director of Community Development, Mr. Palumbi, a happy birthday as well. His birthday was this week. And so with that, I would like to adjourn our meeting today at 8:58 PM. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion to adjourn and we are adjourned at 8:58. Thank you, everyone. Have a good rest of your evening.